So if I may, report out of closed session.
Yes.
Thank you. The City of Emeryville met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda regarding item 4.1.1. An update was provided and direction was given. That's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
Okay. We have to do our oath and sing a song right now.
Mayor Donahue, can I make a suggestion since, one, we don't have the literature in front of us and we're running a little late? Would it be okay if we forewent that this evening?
Okay, given this is a special meeting, let's do that. Everybody good with that?
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. So now, again, especially since last time, we had a mandolin and singer.
Can't talk to that.
No. So we're all here, so roll call not necessary. Approval of final agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move the approval of the final agenda with the request that we adjourn the meeting in the memory of Sultan Bay, a young man who was an Emeryville resident who was, who we lost to gun violence a couple of nights ago in Oakland.
I accept that.
I have a minor adjustment. I'd like to make an announcement at the end of the meeting as well. So I hope that's okay. I cleared it with the city clerk, so I just want to throw that out there.
Okay. That sounds reasonable.
Thank you.
So that is fine with my motion?
Yes. Without objection?
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowers?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda?
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to follow up on an email I sent you all a couple of days ago and sent you a follow-up email on for some very actionable items in regard to the non-agenda item that we discussed at the last council meeting. So would appreciate a response on that. At least three of you have agreed to have an open dialogue with the media, and I would hope that you would follow up on that promise. Thank you.
Bill Reuters speaking. One quick comment. When you set your goals for city council for next year, I noticed on the agenda that you were interested in trying to see if there was some way to get a feedback to the city revenue flow for online purchases of some kind. I think that's an enormously important goal. I hope you pursue it with vigor. We need to find alternative sources of revenue for the city as we go forward. We all know that brick-and-mortar retail sales are under pressure, and it's mainly online sales that are contributing to that pressure. So just to underscore, that's an enormously important item. It's on your agenda. I hope you are able to find some ways to enrich our revenue flow and contribute to the health and well-being of the general fund.
Another public comment? Okay. Action items. Fiscal workshop budget policies. Susan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The purpose of this workshop is to provide the city council an overview about the city's budget policies. After the presentation, we would like to receive feedback from the council about these policies. Before I introduce our consultant, Susan Mayer, I would like to thank the city council for giving staff the opportunity to put on this workshop. Susan is a municipal finance expert who assists California cities in developing sound budget and accounting practices. Her career has spent corporate accounting, government auditing, and public agency employment with four California cities. She is a certified public accountant and serves as an instructor for the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. Susan worked with the city during 2016 after our former finance director left. During the transition period, she helped build the 2016-18 budget and 2016-21 five-year capital budget. Now I will turn over to Susan Mayer for the presentation.
Good evening, council, mayor, and council members. I'm Susan Mayer. I'm pleased to be back in front of the city council. I made a number of presentations to your board last year as you went through the budget development process. And so it's interesting to be back now to continue this discussion with you, to reprise the budget policies that you have in place. Emeryville enjoys a very sound financial condition. You have world-class policies that are the envy of most any other city in the state. You have very well-developed policies. The purpose of tonight's workshop is to seek your input, to be sure that these policies continue to reflect your values and your aspirations for the city, and to get your feedback and recommendations on any change. So we're going to talk a little bit about the policies you have in place, the methods, the mechanisms, and then again, provide some opportunity for your discussion and feedback to staff. The goal is that we reach common ground. As you approach your mid-year report, you're going to hear about some revenues that are slightly eroding. You're going to hear about cost pressures, interest in additional services, positions, some cost adjustments, particularly from CalPERS. You have pressure on your budget, and this is an unusual position for your city to be in. Emeryville has had such strong revenues and revenue growth that there has been less need to be precise. Now you have a very closely balanced budget, a smaller revenue pie, yet a strong demand for services. So it's important that we revisit these policies, affirm whatever policies you choose to affirm, to give direction to staff as to how to come back to present their budget to you. And then the objective is to hold the staff accountable to follow the policies that you set in place, or again, to recommend changes that will allow the city council to achieve its financial objectives. Well, we're going to structure our discussion tonight into these six boxes. We're first going to talk about the treasures of the city, the financial framework that you have, and the way that your budget is structured. We're going to talk about your role as guardians of the city's treasures, your fiduciary opportunities and responsibilities, your opportunities to allocate resources to the programs that you feel reflect the community's values, and your responsibility to ensure a financial stability going into the future. We're going to spend the most of our time on the vision. What are the city's current policies, and how do they compare to best practices? We're going to briefly hover on the report card about how you stand today, how healthy are your reserves, and they are substantial. Then we're going to talk about the winds of change. What environmental forces are coming your way that are going to impact and put pressure on your policies and on your financial stability? And finally, we'll talk about new programs and the process to go about evaluating and implementing new programs within a mid-year budget cycle. This city demonstrates long-term financial planning by adopting a two-year budget. Not many cities do that, but again, it reflects your city's commitment to sound financial planning. You're doing a two-year look ahead. And so now, in the middle of this budget cycle, you have pressures to add services. And cities all across the state have to deal with this. Things change, and there's an interest to add services in mid-cycle. So how do you deal with that when you already have a balanced budget? How do you make room for those new programs? So that's our agenda for tonight, so let's step into the first topic here. Treasures. What resources do you have available for you to finance city services? We're going to talk about sources, restrictions, and how you provide accountability to the many stakeholders. A city such as Emeryville has hundreds of revenue sources. Primarily, these are grouped into three categories: taxes, fees, and grants. And each of them has unique characteristics. Taxes are unrestricted sources, and this is your main source for general city services: public safety, community development, administration. In this city, this is over $30 million a year. It's a significant revenue source. But the main point is that taxes are controlled by the population. Any interest in changing the taxes require a vote of the people. So let's move on to fees. Fees are intended to recover a cost of a specific service. And some examples here in Emeryville would be the building permits that you charge, the charges for your community service programs, your youth programs, senior programs, child development, and then also fees such as the development impact fees where you charge developers for the capital cost of their development. So these are examples of fees, and they're different than a tax in that there has to be an exchange, right? You're charging the cost of a particular service. The state constitution has a number of protections that restrict the fees. You're only allowed to charge up to the cost of that service. You can't just balance your budget, for example, by increasing fees. There has to be a connection to the service being provided. So this is the second category of revenue. The last one is grants. And the types of allocations you get from other levels of government would include the gas tax, the Measure B. The state provides post-grants for police training. Those would be examples of grants for particular programs. Then you also get project-specific grants. A lot of this money comes through Caltrans for street projects, transportation-related projects. There are housing grants, both at the federal and the state level, that might be assigned to a particular project. And the point about these grants is that they take time and effort to administer. It's free money, but there is an administrative burden associated with administering those grants as well. So that's really the triumvirate there of the three types of revenues that you have to fund your city's services. So how do cities provide accountability for all these stakeholders, whether it's the feds, the state, or even your local regulations? And the answer is that cities use fund accounting. And as you adopt your budget, you adopt the budget for over 50 funds, and each fund provides accountability over a particular program. Excuse me. So for example, you have operating grants, or you have capital grants, or you also have user fees for your sewer program. These are examples of restricted money. And these budgets are a lot less dramatic than the general fund. The general fund is where we focus most of the time and interest because this is discretionary money. This is where you, as a city council, get to implement your vision and to reflect the community values as to what programs they prioritize: police, fire, community services, community development. It's a balancing act. But that source of money is your unrestricted general fund, and this is, again, primarily tax dollars. I want to just emphasize for a minute the difference between the corporate model and the government model for budgeting. In the corporate world, if a CFO reports to a board of directors on how they measure success, what is the measure of their resources? They are measuring on total economic resources. What are the assets and the liabilities, including the plant, less the debt? What is the net increase or decrease in shareholders' equity? The corporate objective is a profit. In government, we have a different objective, and so we use different accounting methods. In government, our objective is to deliver service, right? Our objective is to allocate our current tax dollars to maximize the services. So we don't measure profit or return on equity. Instead, we're trying to measure fund balance or working capital. We're only measuring our cash and our current receivables and payables to measure success. So it's a little bit different terminology, and so that's why when you look at the general fund budget, you're looking at current resources and current liabilities, current expenditures. Different terminology. So let's move on to your role as fiduciaries. What are your opportunities and your responsibilities as you approach budget development? And the first is to identify your goals and priorities. And this city has a good history of having an annual goal-setting process. I understand that you conducted this process earlier in the month. And this is your chance to put your stamp on the city's programs and to identify what you value, how you reflect the community values. And so now that you have your priorities set, the next thing is to address and reaffirm the budget policies, and that's what we're doing here tonight. As part of that process, we want to evaluate the revenue structure, and we'll have a few slides on that, and what your current revenue structure is, and ways that you might change that, the size of the pie of resources that are available to fund your services. Allocating resources is the toughest job I think you have in the budget process because you have competing needs. You have many programs. You have many citizens that you would like to serve in different ways. So the question is, what is the pie that's available, and how are you going to split that pie? It's the toughest job to adopt a budget that is balanced so that you have fiscal sustainability going forward. After you adopt the budget, you have a responsibility to monitor and amend that budget as necessary. Your finance director will be back in a few weeks to present the mid-year budget amendment. And her report will tell you that some of the revenues have eroded slightly, not a lot, but a little bit less than planned. And there is a list of unfunded, funded needs, requests for new positions, new programs, and the trick will be to balance those needs with the available resources. The last two steps here in your fiduciary responsibility is to validate results with an external audit, and you have an audit firm that produces your annual financial statements to validate exactly what your fund balance is at the end of the year. And finally, your last job is to plan for long-term success, and you already do a good job with this because you adopt a two-year budget and because you have a five-year CIP program that identifies ways to fund and preserve the city's infrastructure for the long term. So there's just a couple of these that I want to reprise, and the first is to drill down a little bit into the revenue structure and to differentiate the revenues you control from the revenues that are controlled at a different level of government. And so within our tax category, we have revenues that are controlled at the state: property tax, sales tax, gas tax. And of these, the most important to you is the sales tax. Your property tax is a lesser amount of your budget. Unusual for most cities, your sales tax is a more substantial portion of your budget than property tax. The county has taxes here, the Measure B and the BB, that are dedicated for various transportation objectives. So what do you have at the local level? What do you control at the local level? And I will say that over the past few years, this city has taken steps to implement new revenues and to expand your revenue pie. So what are some of the revenues that you have locally? The utility user tax. Not all cities have this. This city does have a utility user tax. The hotel tax is substantial in your city. The transfer tax, this is the real estate transfer tax. This is a new tax in recent years. And then finally, you have card rooms. So these are examples of ways that you have expanded your revenue pie locally. Another positive step that was taken in the last few years is to establish development impact fees. When you look at the five-year CIP program, which is a $100 million program that funds, I think it's somewhere between 50 or 100 different capital programs, projects, these development impact fees went a long way to creating the funding to make that program possible. And it's because the city took a leadership role in establishing those impact fees to secure funding for those important infrastructure projects. So again, this is a locally-controlled fee. What are other sources? Local districts. You have your P-Bid. It's a special district that funds Emery Ground, and I'm a fan of Emery Ground. I have taken it on a number of occasions, and it's a great way to keep cars off the street and to move people around your community. But again, it's a locally-controlled district that brings in additional money to provide a service, in this case, a particular transit service. Finally, we have the successor agency, residual taxing increment. And I really want to drill down into this one because in the current year budget, you adopted a change in the way these revenues are allocated, and it's important to drill into this because it created monies for your operation. So let's talk about, first of all, what is the successor agency and what is residual tax increment? You may remember back in 2012, the state and Jerry Brown shut down redevelopment. And they did that as a way to reallocate the local tax dollars away from redevelopment agencies back to the taxing agencies, such as the city, the county, and the schools, with the primary objective of, at the state level, finding more money to put into the schools' budget. But it has an impact to you as a city as well. Although you lost redevelopment and you lost the money for your infrastructure and your capital programs that redevelopment had funded, you got back your share of the tax increment that was no longer flowing to the redevelopment agency. So basically, the city's getting a larger share of the property tax dollar now, and it's called a residual tax increment. It's a substantial sum of money. And as redevelopment was dissolved, your city council put in place a really very outstanding policy that said, "We have this money because we lost redevelopment." The redevelopment money had been paying and taking care of our infrastructure. We've lost that revenue source. So you adopted a policy that put 75% of that money back into the capital program to make sure you had an ongoing funding mechanism to fund those projects. In addition, that original policy put 20% into affordable housing, a high priority of the council, and also 5% into economic development. So that has been your policy since redevelopment was dissolved in 2012. In 2016 to 18, as you adopted this budget, we did a swap. And the swap that was approved said, "We've got, in the general fund, we have your commercial real estate transfer tax," which is very cyclical. It spikes from year to year. It's very difficult to plan ongoing programs from a very cyclical revenue. So the policy that was adopted committed commercial real estate transfer tax to the capital program and instead took 25% of this residual tax increment and dedicated it to operations. And so that was the way that you were able to fund a number of the operating programs that were expanded in the current fiscal year. So again, I wanted to focus on this policy. There's a lot of discussion on this policy, and there's a lot of pressure on this policy because the entire pie stack here, chart stack, is discretionary money. It's entirely up to the city council how it chooses to allocate this particular revenue source. Again, I think that the city was visionary when it committed this money to capital, a substantial portion to capital, because you have this money since you lost redevelopment. With the development impact fees that are now in place and by dedicating the corporate, I'm sorry, the commercial real estate transfer tax, you have some replacement sources of capital, but again, you had a $100 million CIP program to fund. And so any adjustment to this policy would need to be parallel a change to your capital program. If there is pressure to put any or to reallocate any of these monies, it needs to be in concert with a recognition that there would be less money for capital and that, you know, what is the right answer? And isn't that the balance, the trick of budgeting is to balance short-term operating requirements with long-term infrastructure needs? So again, this slide represents what the policy had been, what it currently is, and we will welcome your input later on whether this policy continues to reflect your values and your direction to staff. As you evaluate the size of your revenue structure, what other options do you have? You've done a lot of good things with the transfer tax, the development impact fee, but what are other ways cities are changing the size of the pie of their resources that are available? What types of new taxes could you consider? And again, any change in tax would require voter approval, so you would need to consider the capacity, ability to pay of the community, and the appetite of the community to fund additional services. It makes a difference if you are adopting a tax for a general purpose, which only takes 50% vote of the people, or if you're saying you want to raise taxes for a very specific program, and that has a higher voter threshold. So again, you have to consider the purpose of the tax and how it will be used. What other types of taxes might you consider? The sales tax, which is actually called a transaction or use tax. And you already have one of these with your county transportation tax, right? The B and the BB. I think this is a tax measure. There are other cities sometimes use parcel taxes to fund particular programs. And in your city, this would tax residents and businesses as opposed to the transitory population that you tax now through your sales tax and your TOT. And again, there's also special districts. You can form special districts to expand services, like you have done with the P-Bid. Other than taxes, what other options do you have? Not fees, right? Because fees have to be connected with the cost of a service you provide. Not grants, right? Unless you're able to go and generate new grants, but really, those are outside of your control. Those are determined by another level of government. So what's the last option we'll discuss tonight? I want to just mention some of the mechanics of a bond financing program. Now, the purpose of bond financing is to accelerate a project to provide immediate benefit and then to pay for it over time. And in theory, you're matching the payment for that project over the service life of that project. So if you build something with a 30-year life and you have a 30-year bond, you're matching, in a way. But it comes with a cost, and really, a fairly heavy cost, because bond financings are complex. The first thing you would have to do would be to establish a financing team with attorneys, underwriters, financial advisors, to give you information about current market rates, your credit capacity, different ways that you could structure the bond issue to best match your objectives. Again, there are teams of people and experts who put this information for you. It's highly regulated. Both the federal and the state have very specific rules about how bond financings might be presented to you. And recent state legislation created a requirement that you, as the council, adopt bond financing policies before you even embark on this path. And so I'm giving you a lot of qualifications here, but I was asked to show you just a mechanical example of what a bond issue would look like. And this is for a small project, a $10 million project. Once you add in the cost of the issuance for the trustees, the attorneys, the underwriters, the insurance to put the bond issue together, a $10 million project might become an $11 million bond issue. And if you chose to pay for that over 15, again, these are all hypothetical examples, perhaps your debt service might be $1 million a year. So without a new revenue source, what does that mean? If you have a project that is so important that you want to accelerate its benefit to the community, you would have to recognize that that cost of that annual debt service would replace approximately six to seven employees, right? If the size of the pie doesn't change, yes, you could choose to debt-finance a project, but it means there would be less operating money for other programs to sustain. So again, bond issues reflect your priority as a council. Now, I will say that you've adopted a $100 million capital project program for five years and have found ways to finance that without a bond issue, right? But should you identify additional projects or programs of your value and your priority, this slide is intended to show you the mechanics of how that works. And again, the question is, is the benefit of the short-term project delivery worth the interest cost to finance that debt over time? The other consideration is whether that bond capacity might be needed for some higher priority purpose in the future. Allocating resources to programs, this is the toughest part of the whole game. You have prioritized your programs, and so as you go through building the expenditure allocations, the first thing you need to do is select the, you know, what is the most efficient or effective way to deliver the service? And this city enjoys regionalization for delivery of your fire service because you jointly deliver services with other cities and with the county to provide synergy and efficiencies from that model. And so this is an example where you've chosen to outsource that particular service. But other services, key services of the cities, you staff with employees, right? And so here, you need to negotiate labor contracts and the terms and the benefits, estimate those costs, and then finally, identify what the cost of those programs are. The hard part is balancing the cash flow in with the cash flow out. And so we bring in taxes, we bring in fees, but we need to pay for our personnel and our vendors. It is not an unlimited pool. You have a resource, a pool of resources that are available, and the hardest part is to making sure that they match. This budget that you're in right now was very carefully balanced. There was not a lot of margin. There was a lot of give and take, and there was not an ability to fund all the services that were requested, and that's back in June. And since then, the cash flow in is less, sales tax in particular, a couple others, not a big difference, but again, a smaller pie than was planned. The cash flow out, you have some programs that are over budget. You have some programs where the cost estimates are understated, and you will see in your mid-year report that there are various position reclassifications, there are expenses over budget, and there are new programs that need to be balanced because right now, you don't have a model that balances. There's more demand for services than revenues. And this is a new and different condition for the city to be in because you have enjoyed such strong revenues before. This is a pie that I presented to you last spring with the proposed budget, and it's a depiction of how the general fund is currently allocated between programs. Over half the budget here goes to police and fire, the two largest pies, which is very typical for most California cities. This is a very, very typical pie. And then you have smaller slices for the public works, community services, community development, and the administrative functions of the city. So in this situation, and this pie is something under $40 million, $37, $38, $39 million, depending on what year you're looking at. That's about the size of the range. So imagine that the entire pie has to shrink a little bit, and imagine that some of these pie pieces are growing larger, child development in particular. They're going to come back with a recommendation to Child development in particular, they're going to come back with a recommendation to increase that, because that program is not tracking within its budget. And there are other examples as well. I'm just using that as an example. But as some of these pies are coming to ask for more money, and the police department would, would like to add more position, there's been requests for information on what it would look like to increase the fire staffing on its trucks from three to four. What would that look like in terms of the budget? And the city council has identified some new programs they would like to add in as well. So we have an incredible pressure on this pie, and your job is to allocate these resources within, within the pie. I want to, and I have some slides on this later, but if I, if I don't say pension 20 times tonight, I haven't done my job, because pension is, is truly the elephant in, in the room. The pension costs for CalPERS are dramatically changing, and I have some slides as to the policies that have been changed at the state level that will increase dramatically your cash flow out to sustain employee pensions. Right, wrong, however we got here, this is where we are and the cash flow out will be. And I, I consult for a number of, of cities and the message to all the cities, and I, and I've actually been to two conferences in the last few months with finance directors statewide. And the, and the consensus between finance directors is that most cities will have fewer employees five years from now than they do today, because the growth of the pension costs far, will far outweigh any growth in revenues. And now, I'm not saying that for your particular city, I'm just saying in general that everybody is hunkering down because these pension costs are, are truly staggering. The increases are truly staggering. So let's go back to some of the, these programs that are looking for additional resources. And let's just look at fire, because again, there was a request for information on what it would take to staff four versus three fire trucks. Right now, your, your fire department budget is about six, six to seven million dollars. A million of that, you paid a CalPERS for the unfunded portion of the liability for the employees who are, for the, for the service credits earned by employees while they were still your employees. Obviously, they're employees of, of the county fire authority at this time. So that fire, on this chart, it shows 17%. We requested a proposal from the county as to what it would look like. Just with the existing staffing of three per truck, the costs are expected to increase from six to eight million over the next few, few years. And if you, if the city wanted to entertain the feasibility of a fourth person on that truck, the costs would grow to 10 million. So let's just put that in perspective. The fire department costs on this pie would change from six million to 10 million. That's an addition of $4 million out of a $40 million budget. That's a 10% reallocation of resources. If that's something the city would like to consider, and I just use that as an example, because the police department has proposed additional positions as well. This isn't just fire. But I'm using this as an example because we have, we just received this, this five-year projection from the county fire. If, if that was a priority of the council, you would have to crowd out 10%, add up numbers on any of these other programs. You could choose to eliminate either the entire public works or community services or community development department in order to fund those additional fire services or police services or whatever other program you chose to, to prioritize. And so the message is, is really twofold. All the costs are going to increase because of the pension issues. And changing, if you choose to increase, that's just to maintain the existing level of service. If you choose to prioritize, and this is the council's opportunity and responsibility to reflect the community values. If you choose to increase or change any of the funding of these programs, there has to be a compensating adjustment. If you choose to increase police or fire, then something else has to be reduced. If you want to increase child development, then something else has to come down. It's a zero-sum game right now with the current revenue structure. Now, what is, what, what other options do you have? Will the economy continue to build? Will revenues grow? We hope so. Will new hotels come online? We hope so. Will the retail sales improve? Will the city receive some windfalls from some transfer tax? Any of these things are possibilities. But as you plan for sustainability, you want to look at ongoing revenue sources and balance them with ongoing expenditure sources. The city is in the financial condition that it has because it has budgeted conservatively for revenues, maintained its reserves, and augmented services when resources were in the bank. Right now, you've got a budget that relies on revenues from a new hotel that hasn't even been annualized yet. It's only been open less than half a year, right? Yet you're betting that those revenues are coming in, and fortunately, they are coming in. But again, you, you, you have a sound financial position because historically, the city has done a good job of balancing its revenues with its expenditures. Let's look at the type of expenditures. As you fund these services, this chart shows you the pie of expenditures and how they are divided between employees and vendors. Because we are a service organization and because most of our services are delivered by city employees, over half of the budget is salaries and budgets, 54%. And again, this is the proposed budget from, from last spring. Let's move on to our vision, the budget policies. I want to say that having worked with many cities over the course of my career as an auditor, as a, as a finance director and as a consultant, you have outstanding policies. You really do have, you are really set well. Your policies are fairly well-developed and from, from a variety of different objectives. So we'd like to, and, and attached to your staff report tonight, there were some examples from the League of Cities and some other sources that demonstrated objectives for budget policies, and I think almost without fail, you hit most, most of those objectives. So we'd like to talk about the policies that are currently in place. And then again, our, our real objective is tonight is to, to make sure we have common ground, we agree on the ground rules so that you can give direction from staff and then hold them accountable to bring you back budget proposals that comply with those policies. These are the budget policies. They're printed right in the, the budget message in your budget book. They have, were not changed in the current budget. And these are universal, right? Current expenditures are supported by current revenues. We balance ongoing programs with ongoing revenues. One-time funds, and you are fortunate to have these, are used for one-time purposes, to augment, to provide seed money, for capital improvements, to subsidize. But they, but again, with the recognition that, that one-time money is, it, it does you no purpose to, to fund ongoing programs with one-time monies, because then when it comes to the next budget cycle, you'll be forced to, to choose between programs that are already in place. Fund balance is maintained in all major operating funds, and you have done a good job of this as well. As you look through the city's budget, you'll see appropriate reserves in, in most or not, if not all of your operating funds. Unfunded liabilities identified and funded, and this is where I think the city truly is ahead of other cities. You have established policies to fund your retiree health. You have established policies and, and funded your compensate absences that you owe to the employees for their, for their leave banks. You have taken a significant step in the current budget to set aside money for, for the, the growing pension challenges. You, you do a good job of, of meeting and funding your unfunded liabilities. And finally, you've identified capital improvement projects and prioritized them and funded them. So these are your budget principles. In addition, in this current budget, because of the buildup of one-time monies, council invested in five different objectives with one-time monies and established policies in these five areas. And we're going to talk about these one at a time, but this is where I think your, your policies really go above and, above and beyond. So in growing for the future, this is where the city council adopted a 5% allocation of your surplus tax increment and dedicated it to economic development. And this provides about $200,000 per year, 5% of surplus tax increment. And this is to, again, to provide money to facilitate that development project that comes along or any other development opportunity. Reserve policy number two, the capital program. There's a couple of, of points here. The first is in your general capital fund. A $5 million reserve was established as your infrastructure reserve. You sit in a major transportation corridor, right? You have significant assets, buildings, street, roadways, infrastructure to maintain. Something will break. At some point in time, you don't know what it's going to be, but you have, you've established a $5 million reserve to be sure that if there's some road failure or some failure, you have the money to respond, whether it's a natural disaster. You have an infrastructure reserve to be sure the people continue to get to and around your city. You have an implementation reserve of 2.5 million. What does that mean? Of the 100 million in projects you have adopted for the next five years, some of those projects will be over budget, right? Or maybe a grant doesn't materialize or expires. And so what we have here is an implementation reserve to make sure your public works can deliver the, the scope of projects that they have asked for. 2.5 million, these are significant reserves, but appropriate for the size of your capital program. In addition to setting aside reserves, your policy commits revenues for ongoing funding. It commits the commercial transfer tax, and it also commits a portion of the residual tax increment. And this is the change that was adopted in the current budget cycle where we reduced from 75 to 50%. Still provides ongoing, a substantial ongoing revenue source to the CIP. But again, this is used and applied to the projects that have been, excuse me, approved. Reserve policy number three, pay down unfunded pension obligations. This is where, again, I gotta say pension at least 20 times tonight, right? This is where we're going to talk about pension and, and what is it that changed? The first thing I want to show you is the slide that, about the, that, that we showed you last spring as the budget was adopted. And this talks about the CalPERS board action from December 2015. This is where CalPERS realized that, did you know that CalPERS is, is paying out more every year to retirees than it's taking in from active member contributions? It has a negative cash flow situation. It's changed its investment portfolio, it's changed the types of assets that they can invest in, because they need a steady cash stream to pay for those retirees. And so in December of 2015, the CalPERS started to address this risk, right? But they adopted what they called a risk reduction plan. And they said, we're going to reduce our discount rate from 7.5% to 6.5, but we're going to do it over 20 years. We're going to give cities plenty of time to adjust their budgets and to pay for this. This 1% change was going to result in a $20 million increase to your unfunded liability. You had a, a liability of 25 million of unfunded. This change is going to add 20 million so that you had a, a new target of 45 million. Now, these numbers are from the June 2014 accounting valuation. And the reason I mention that is that that 45 million dollar circle, once you got the next year's accounting valuation, has grown to $50 million. Your unfunded pension liability that was printed in your last financial statements, the June 2016 financial statements, that pie, that green pie, has grown to $50 million. So what did CalPERS do this year that has got everybody talking? In December of 2016, said, we're not making this change fast enough. And, and part of this was because in the year ended June 2016, the investment return was zero. CalPERS was supposed to make 7.5% on their money, and it was not a good year. They made zero, they lost ground. And so as a result, the, the system was becoming less and less funded. And so in December, CalPERS changed its discount rate from 7.5 to 7%. And what that means for you is that every employee that you have now costs more. The benefits that you have promised to your employees cost more than when you negotiated and, and put the, the program in place. And so the, the discount is going to be phased in over three years. And the, and, and the numbers I have on this slide are from the CalPERS circle. These are broad stroke, generic numbers based on statewide averages. They are not Emeryville-specific. But safety plans are expected to increase 2.5% of salary for normal cost. Miscellaneous, which is the non-safety, plans are expected to grow from 1.3% again for normal cost. I do want to, for, for, for those of you who aren't actuaries, I want to just clarify, what does normal cost mean? And how does that differ from the next topic, which is the unfunded liability? Each of your employees earns a service credit for every year that they worked. And so your employees are, are earning a service credit, and CalPERS asks you to put in the present value of that service credit, of what they expect to pay that employee in the future. So that's what we call normal cost. The, the value of the pension that that, the present value of the benefit that employee is earning this year. And so we're going to be increasing some, up to 5% for safety plans and up to 3% for non-safety plans. So instead, so think about your budget, and as you negotiate salary increases, you know, the cost of a, a percentage increase in salaries, this is the comparable amount that will be going to CalPERS. The unfunded is the liability that you owe for all the prior actuarial mistakes, right? Every year, actuaries make estimates about investment returns, about salary increases, about longevity, about demographics, about when people will retire, about disabilities. The cumulative impact of all the actuarial errors, because the city has always paid in what, what CalPERS has asked you to pay in, right? But the cumulative error is the unfunded liability. Right now, you pay 2.1 million a year towards your unfunded liability, and this, with the new discount rate, this is expected to increase somewhere between 600,000 to 800,000 a year. Now, I want to just clarify, that doesn't include the investment losses we just earned. That's just the change in the discount rate. So you can see why everyone is concerned. How many employees would you have to cut in order to pay an additional 600,000 or 800,000 a year on debt service, on pension costs? That's the, the trade-off that you will have. If your revenue pie stays the same, you will need to be cutting this much in services to make that payment to CalPERS. So, so what does your pension reserve look like? Because this city put aside good money to, to address this issue. You had a lot of fund balance at June of 16, partly because you had an $8 million loan payoff from your redevelopment agency. So you found yourself with extra money. And, and as part of that reserve policy, you funded your infrastructure reserve, and you also funded this pension reserve. You had a reserve of 5 million, 8 million was added to it. So as you adopted this budget, you were going into the year with 13.5 million. So think about that $50 million unfunded pension liability. You've already set aside money for 13 million of that amount. The 17, 18 budget draws into that by a million to subsidize the PERS rates, which was the intent of that reserve. So you have about $12 million left. So where does that leave you? You've covered 25% of this increase in your liability. And I have to tell you, there are a whole lot of other cities who wish they were, had your good fortune, because you have taken one-time money and used it to pay down unfunded There's still 75% yet to be funded. All right, moving up back to your reserve policies, the fourth program, the fourth policy. There was an intent to support community programs. And so 1.4 million was allocated to this category, including a million for the cultural arts center and 400,000 for community programs. Again, the intent was to have a balanced approach to your reserves. Finally, the rainy day fund, the contingency reserves. And here you have an economic uncertainty reserve of 50%. That's your target. If revenues in 17, 18 are approximately 19.5 million, I'm sorry, 50% would be 19.5 million. Is 50% an appropriate amount for this city? Again, that's a value judgment, but because your budget is so heavily dependent on cyclical revenues, sales tax and hotel revenues, if anything happens to these transportation corridors, if a natural disaster, some other issue, your revenues will, will change quickly, right? So the reason you have this contingency reserve is to be sure that you are braced for fluctuations in your revenue and you're able to have time to make adjustments to your operating costs if necessary. So how is the city doing? What is your report card? Outstanding, you're, you're very secure financially. And why? Because you have sound policies, you have balanced budgets, you've had strong tax revenue growth, you've had new development fees, you had an $8 million redevelopment loan repayment, and you're starting to get surplus tax increment in from the former redevelopment agency. So what are your revenue trends? They have grown substantially over the years, but not in the last two years. The six, the 17 and the 18 projection actually are a little bit less than the 16 projection. You had some strong one-time items in 16. So still strong, growing over time, but you don't see the steep incline that you had before. So revenues are, are stabilizing here and flattening. What are your reserves? I'll give you a clue here. The green ones are the good news and the red ones are not. You have a 50% expenditure contingency reserve, which is good, the 19.5, but you also have above that an additional 2.3 million between your economic, overfunding of your economic uncertainty reserve and your unassigned general fund. You have 2.3 million of one-time money. And this is where it gets interesting, and this is where the policy starts. As you approach your mid-year report, and as you approach your financial plan going forward, and you evaluate the programs that you have to spend, that you have, that you would like to fund, you have 2.3 million above your stated policy to consider as you would like to fund, you have 2.3 million above your stated policy to consider as you consider the requests for spending. On the employee benefit side, these are both red. These are monies that are set aside for pension and you also have a reserve for retiree health. We hadn't talked about that one before, but they are both underfunded. It's fabulous that you have money here, but you still have unfunded needs here. And as you evaluate your capacity to add new programs, remember that you still have unfunded liabilities in these two areas. In addition, you have capital and development reserves that had been discussed. We have an infrastructure reserve of 5 million, an implementation reserve of 2.5, an economic development reserve of 1.1, and $4 million for affordable housing projects. Now, I do want to qualify that those affordable housing projects that reserve is committed in your budget to some projects. I don't want to imply that this is money, new money that's available for projects, but at June 2016, this was the report card of the monies that were confirmed and validated by your external auditor. Winds on the horizon. So what do we need to brace for? What are the pressures on your budgetary policies? And some of these I've highlighted before, but this is just to reprise what those pressures are. The dependency on cyclical revenue cycles. Cities that have a strong base, a strong portion of their revenue coming off property taxes are gonna have less fluctuation from year to year than Emeryville. Emeryville is dependent on sales and hotel tax, which are cyclical. Economists will tell you that things are going up, going down, going sideways. They can't tell you what year there will be an economic cycle or downturn, but you can be sure that there will be one and on an ongoing basis, right? So you are dependent on cyclical tax revenue. The boomerang funds, now that's a slang term for the residual tax increment. That's what the industry tends to call those funds. You have a temporary redirect because there is a very large corp yard remediation project that is funded and your successor agency, and you sit as a successor agency board when you take off your city council hat, you've approved spending and you've approved a payment schedule on that project. That will redirect tax increment surplus away from the general fund and away from your capital program on a short-term basis until that project is funded. You have an increasing cost of existing programs. We've mentioned pension and retirement. I'm also mentioning child development just because you're gonna see that in two weeks or three weeks in the mid-year report because this is a program that is needing and looking for additional contributions to sustain its current service level. You have other mid-year service costs, requests, new programs, new positions that are frankly outpacing the available revenues. And so these are the pressures on the horizon. So let's talk about new programs, changes. What do you do in the middle of the budget year when you, especially you as new council members, are trying to respond to community needs and your vision for the community and you are valuing and prioritizing programs that aren't funded in a budget that's already balanced? What do you do? You have an unmet community need and you want a new program to implement. So what do we do? The first thing we have to do is rigorously cost out that program. You have to evaluate, is it gonna be done in-house? Are you gonna contract for it? What are the startup costs? And what is the range or sensitivity analysis, right? You have a most likely cost, but maybe the cost will be from X to Y and you have to plan for contingencies. Anytime you start something new, it's, there's always an element of uncertainty as what the ultimate cost is. So you want to be sure you have an ample buffer to deliver the project that has been asked. So now the tough part comes. Will this program compete with other programs? Is there another program that you want to defund and discontinue? Do you have one-time startup funds from, do you want to draw one-time money from fund balance to get the program started? But then, that's with the understanding that in the next budget cycle, you need to compete with other programs to carry forward. Or the other option is to defer and prioritize it within the next budget cycle. So those are some of the challenges and issues that all cities address, not just your cities, as they contemplate new programs that they want to implement. So what is the staff's responsibility to you for new programs? They need to advise you on the budget capacity and they will do this through their mid-year report. They will recommend ways to appropriate funds within your budget policy and they will propose budget amendments for the new spending. Again, Emeryville has been fortunate because of its strong revenues that hasn't necessarily needed to be as precise, but this year you do have to be precise because the revenues aren't quite materializing as you had planned. So in the past, there may have been a less formal approach to appropriating the funds to sustain new programs or new positions. And I'll just throw it as an example, last June, there were some police department positions that were reclassified. Happened in June, right the same time the budget was adopted, but the budget wasn't adopted to fund those changes at the same time that the positions were reclassified. And this has happened in other departments as well. And so staff's responsibility to you is every time there's a new program or a change, they need to bring you the budget amendment at the same time to ensure the fiscal discipline to make sure there's money to pay for those changes. The budget represents your financial plan. It's your fiscal responsibility to make sure staff is monitoring and reporting to you on the status of that. And you do that both through reports to your budget committee, your council budget committee, and again, through formal reports to you. And then again, the responsibility is to be sure that any new spending that's authorized is accompanied by a formal budget resolution to keep the budget in balance. That concludes my comments, this refresher here on budget policies. I'm happy to take any questions and also to provide you an opportunity to discuss and provide direction to staff. Do you like these policies? Do they meet your needs or are there changes that you want to consider recommending?
I have some questions right away. The residual tax, isn't that really what cities would normally have as property tax prior to the redevelopment funds starting? Isn't this more normalized spreading of property tax?
Absolutely, yes.
And so normally, property tax in most cities goes for city services. Unlike Emeryville, bucking the trend, that's what's true in most cities. Is that, that's pretty much true, isn't it?
Yes, with one qualification. Cities that choose to take that money into the general fund also need to budget a capital appropriation to fund infrastructure. So you can, you can bring all the money into the general fund, but then also within your expenditure pie, add a capital component. Or as Emeryville did, you can split it upfront.
And so our past history has included having a city budget, I think of over $60 million when the redevelopment budget was operating, and then a crash down to 30 million. And now we're up at around 42. Is that sort of a general statement of our recent roller coaster ride that we've ridden well? Wouldn't you say that's accurate?
I don't have the history back to reaffirm that 60 million. And I don't know if you're just talking about the general fund, but the general fund right now has been inching from 35 closer to 40. That's where we stand in the past few years. If it was 60 before, that's before my time.
No, I don't think the general fund was 60. I think that overall budget, including redevelopment, was 60.
That's right.
I'm curious, when you said we diverted 25% from, that was the residual taxes going into the capital program, and we replaced that with, sorry, impact fees as well as commercial transfer tax. Is that a complete substitution? Does that make up 100% of what had prior been going in there or no?
I don't think it's possible to do an apples-to-apples comparison because the transfer tax is, it spikes from year to year. You're dependent on a particular commercial property turning over or not. The objective was to have a predictable revenue source for your operations and to have the spiked items in the capital program. The development impact fees would be another example where some years there's a lot of money and some years there's not. So I can't tell you, it depends on the fiscal year.
Okay, so like in the past year, has that been true?
I don't have an answer for you.
Okay.
I have more questions, like for example, our special project for our corp yard. The theory is that eventually the property owners from the past who are responsible for that groundwater and ground pollution are going to pay for the cleanup. But the city is on the hook for $46 million in the meantime until those payments can be collected. Is that what I'm understanding you're saying about that?
I don't have knowledge of that part of the program. My only perspective is that the funding on your approved ROPS, the successor agency's spending plan includes money to fund that project. And while the successor agency is funding that project, money is being, obviously the residual is reduced. So you have a temporary reduction. Should there be recoveries in the future? I don't have knowledge of that and that would be good news if that's the case.
Maybe Mr. Geena could answer that.
Yes, that's correct. That was always the plan that staff had put in front of you in approving the cleanup plan, the successor's agency's approval of the cleanup plan and the approval of your ROPS was that it was, you know, that the idea was that we were also going to be seeking recovery from the potentially responsible owners, previous owners.
And was there any sense of timeline on all of that? Because that really could affect our capital spending going forward.
I mean, this will be, this could take years. I mean, there is, because there is litigation involved and there's the appeals process after that, and it's reasonable to assume that there probably will be an appeals process as well. I can't give you, you know, I can't give you any accuracy in terms of a timeframe, but it would be a matter of years.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
Okay, I guess this is time for public comment. No more council clarifying questions.
Oh, I have one more question, actually. How come we're seeing a drop in permit fees projected for 2018?
I'm not aware of a drop in permit fees. There were some large one-time fees in 2016 related to some particular development projects that happened in that particular year.
Okay, so that's why it's going down.
That was pretty sobering. I guess my recommendation would be that 400,000 that it's gonna cost us in Fair Work Week administration that Chad Smalley mentioned, what, 1% of our budget? I don't know, maybe we take that money instead, do things that are, can actually bring money into our city versus repel business and add it to public safety, primes up to 18%. I think that's what most residents would probably say. It's the pragmatic thing to do. Please consider that, thank you.
I have, in the spirit of studying the issue so that it's as clear as can be, maybe Susan can tell us what we legally have to keep on funding. For example, pension, do we have a legal obligation to continue to fund? And also, I want to understand, if we had, I may have gotten this wrong, but if we have available one-time money, I want to make sure my ears are still working at my advanced decrepit age. If we have available one-time money of 2.3 million and the employee benefits, the pension and retiree health are 10 times that amount, 20.3 million of unfunded, then I want to understand legally what we have to fund first. That's gonna be a help to me. That's my comment.
Any other public comment? Okay, staff, do you suggest we offer our opinions right now about all of this and give you feedback?
Perhaps we could go back to where the, sort of the list begins of those policies that we just walked through, one by one. I don't think there are that many, but to get the affirmation, it may generate some more questions.
Okay, that seems good. How does the council feel about doing that?
Sure.
That's fine.
Slide 21, please. Can you go to slide? Well, let's start here. These are the general policies that were included, and these have been in place for some time. This isn't new for the current year, but there are five overarching budget policies. And let's talk about them one by one. Do we confirm that current expenditures should be supported by current revenues?
Yes.
Yes.
And that one-time funds are used for one-time purposes?
That seems reasonable to me.
Mr. Mayor, I think there was one thing that Susan had discussed earlier and did with me, and that is the possibility of, if need be, to use the one-time funds, also to consider ongoing programs in the future as it relate, would relate to startup cost only. The one-time startup cost or seed money, I think is the way Susan put it with me, that how would you feel about using one-time money in order to fund startup costs of new programs that the council has approved? It would be a one-time use.
Then it seems already kind of fall within that. It is a one-time purpose.
That was my thought.
See, I didn't quite hear what you just said. Say that.
If it's a one-time use, then it seems like it is already categorized under a one-time purpose.
I think startup costs are, you know, one-time purposes. You only start once, hopefully.
I guess I'm gonna say yes.
Even though it hasn't been done that way, it seems reasonable to me as an approach.
So you have a few new programs that have been prioritized by the council and staff's been given direction to implement these programs. They aren't in the budget, so it would be, there would be an opportunity during the startup phase to use one-time money to support those programs with the understanding that they would need to compete with other programs in the next budget cycle.
Like tenant protection ordinance, we have one-time costs in the first year that would go down in theory, hopefully.
Developing regulations, SOPs, things like that, sure.
So the question is, do you want to fund the whole program during the 16 to 18 budget cycle or just those costs of those programs that are clearly one-time?
Oh, I prefer the latter myself.
I think that makes sense.
Not to fund the whole first year, because if it's $600,000 the first year, but it will be 400,000 in outgoing years. I mean, we basically are committing to finding 400,000 or the 400,000 in the outgoing years if we use the one-time cost for the whole 600 in the first year, right?
Yeah, that seems to make sense.
And so there's some gray area because with any new program, there's uncertainty, right, about what the program will truly cost. And so this is an area, you know, that perhaps has some gray definitions. And so look for staff to come back with some alternatives for you in the mid-year report.
Okay.
I think I have a different take on that. I think if we have something that's coming online and has the startup costs and the ongoing costs, given that we do a two-year budget, it does, doesn't seem, again, the general concept, one-time funds for one-time purposes, but to start something up midstream after the budget's already been done, allocating one-time funds for the two phases of the project and then saying, okay, and then we're gonna have to figure out how to pay for it when we do our next two-year budget, is actually a reasonable path to take.
Okay, I want to go back to number one a little bit. In today's environment where our revenue is less, unexpectedly less, would we consider using some of our reserves just to get us through to then recalibrate our, I mean, the purpose of our reserve in concept is to help you when there's been an unexpected change? Isn't a reduction unexpected change? So therefore, our reserves should take up a little bit till we can then adjust our budget. I mean, it just seems to me that that's a sensible, normal function of reserves. Otherwise, we would be in a Otherwise, we would be in a kind of yo-yo situation, that, you know, a little dip, and then all of a sudden, we're having to slash, and we're struggling to, you know, the time is required to rebalance. So, you know, I could see using reserves to take into account a downturn until we can adjust our budget, not to sustain a budget, but to adjust it.
You know, I think of reserves as being much more for emergencies, and I think it goes to Councilmember Medina's question earlier, the purpose, or I think your question either as well, the purpose of using the more susceptible to fluctuation funds for capital projects, which can be funded over time versus ongoing expenses. So to me, I'm always hesitant to use reserves for ongoing expenses, because we do know that the economy is going to change over time. And so creating some stability funds, or other, calling them something other than reserves, to me, a reserve is, you know, we're in prime, prime dangerous areas for various things.
I agree with Councilmember Pats.
Okay, what if I were to say, okay, our reserve funds should be 45%, and we have a 5% stability fund?
Well, I think best budget practices are 50% of the general fund cost for the year, and we're at 52% funded. Is that correct?
You are overfunded 2.3 million. If I would suggest, I think that reacting to revenue fluctuations during the budget cycle is a good use of reserves, but that on an ongoing basis, you might want to balance revenues and expenditures. I think it's very difficult to move the needle on expenditures, especially this late into the fiscal year. So particularly for the '16, '17 year, you do have those reserves to help you with the unexpected revenue fluctuations. So I think that both the council members' perspectives are very valid, but this late into the fiscal year, I think you will probably find yourself needing to use part of your reserves to cover the revenue shortfall.
And does that conflict with principle one that we have here?
I think that these are intended to approach the biennial budget. As you have changes during the year, you have to nip and tuck to get through the biennium. And so these policies, I think, are very important for a long-term plan, and as you adopt a budget, or as you add new programs, but as you have, you know, cyclical changes with, you know, within a short period of time, I think these would be appropriate for one time.
I have two points on that. One is a question. So in the use of reserves to fund current expenditures in a shortfall year, is there a limit that you recommend, or some sort of metric you advise that we use to determine how much is an acceptable amount to use? I mean, if the city was $7 million short of, I mean, we're not, but if we were $7 million short of operating costs this year, I mean, we wouldn't spend necessarily $7 million, I'm thinking, but we might. And I'm just wondering if there's a tool or a metric that you recommend we use to gauge how much is an acceptable amount of reserve use? Is it literally just, don't go below the floor for what we should have in the bank? Or is it kind of like fact-sensitive at all times, or how do you couch that?
Because it takes so long to move the expenditure needle, you negotiate contracts, you put in place programs, it's hard to move those expenditures on a short-term basis. So I think that the tools that I would recommend are, you know, is the revenue change ongoing, or, you know, do you have consistent news about the change in the revenues? So did you know that four times a year, you get sales tax information from the Board of Equalization? You get monthly estimates and advances, but four times a year, you get real data. Did you know that Friday is one of those days? So on Friday, you're going to find out your December results. In June, you're going to find out your March quarter results. And so if you have a one-time blip in revenues, perhaps you don't react immediately, but if you have two quarters that have changed, or three quarters, then you need to make stronger and stronger changes on your expenditure side.
So, sorry, I think you have another point.
It's okay, go ahead.
But I think, for me, the magic number is always somewhere around 10%, right? We hope our budget is accurate within, you know, 10%, right? And so if we have a 52% reserve, that gives us that margin of, you know, going down to a 40%. One of the reasons I'm so keen on having a reserve is because it's to cover operating costs in emergency, and for me, that means people's paychecks. And so is, if we get comfortable spending the reserve funds, and an actual crisis happens, that means, you know, fire and police are going without, and that's, so I'm sort of directing that more at Member Donahue, Mayor Donahue. So I just, that's where I stick on that piece, so.
I still agree with you, and I appreciate what you're saying, so I, I'm not opposed to looking at small amount of reserve use for one-time costs, to the point you made. My other point is linked to the whole two-year budget process. I really do support the two-year budget cycle. However, I wish that we would use odd-year budget cycling, and I would like to see us change that, if counsel would support that, actually, and make a plan to move that way. The reason being is that some of the conflicts that I think we have are the product of elections, and the reality is that when you plan a budget in the spring of an even-numbered year, and then you elect a whole different group of people the following six months, you have a two-year budget cycle by which there are values encoded in the budget that may not reflect the priorities that the residents made when they chose to elect new people. And rather than have that conflict, which I think translates down to the staff level, where they, we see that at the priorities and the goal setting, and we see that at all these other locations, where there are things that we have heard that people want us to do, I would like to see us either make this the end of, you know, the budget year, this year, and begin the new two-year budget cycle, actually, in June, so that we have a two-year budget that is in keeping with the election cycle. So any person who steps off, the new council members who will come on after us, will be finishing up the last six months of our two-year budget cycle and be able to decide a budget for themselves. And I think that's the way government's intended to run. So I would like us to move to odd-year budget cycles, so that we do not have a conflict and tension when we give priorities to staff between what we've set in motion from a prior iteration of government into what is actually happening on the day-to-day. So I don't know if people are supportive of that, but I would like to see us do that.
I think, given that the last council switched from odd-year elections to even-year elections, I think the three outgoing members all served five years in their last term, for that reason, it makes perfect sense for us to come in and make that switch. You know, so I second that idea.
Yes, support.
I'd be curious first to ask staff how much of a lift that would be to switch that this year.
As far as this year, it probably would be quite a lift, but I think one way or the other, I understand the need for it, I understand the preference for it, and I think we can do it.
Okay.
I appreciate that from staff. I also want to appreciate the members of the Budget Advisory Committee who are here tonight on their Monday. One of the most excellent committees we have in the city, very, very dedicated people and very informed people. So thank you for being here. And could you answer the question, or maybe Mr. Geena could answer the question, one of you, that Ms. Quittell asked earlier about the legality, the necessity, perhaps, of certain obligations over others?
The specific question she asked about was the CalPERS, the unfunded pension liability. CalPERS bills this for you over time, and so the legal requirement is to fund it over time as CalPERS bills this to you. You have plenty of money to fund the current bills. The issue is the debt that is out there, the unfunded portion, and it's no different than any other, than a bond issue. The longer you pay, the more interest costs, right? So you pay less today than more tomorrow. But there's no legal requirement to fund any of the unfunded liabilities. It's a policy choice.
Yes, thank you.
And just to further clarify that, each city has their relationship to that unfunded liabilities, but I guess there, in a way, there's a little bit of risk for the whole system being, I mean, if CalPERS has 0% income last year because of poor investment choices, that just sounds like everyone's at risk. Every city is at risk. Isn't that true?
That is true. Your largest employee groups are in dedicated plans, where you do not share risk with other cities. Your new members, who are called the Peppera members, that's a state term for the new employees that have a reduced benefit level, they are in pools that share risk between cities, but your large police, fire, and non-safety employee groups are in isolated pools that don't share risk with other cities.
Perhaps Fran has another question that we should listen to, because she is on our committee. We need to hear from her.
Sorry. Excuse me for asking. In the principles, where it says city council's budget principles, I wonder if reserves would be used to replace declining revenues in a shortfall year. Is there a principle that would be added to replace those reserves that would be used for budget adjustments? I'd feel more comfortable then. I'm not comfortable using reserves if that isn't one of the principles, actually.
I think that in this particular situation, you are well situated, because you have the 50% reserve that several of you have articulated as a goal, as a value, plus you have an additional 2.3 million. So you do have funds available to absorb some small revenue fluctuations, if that is your choice. When the mid-year budget amendment comes back to you, you can say, no, I want, we don't want to use those reserves. That's fine, you want to use them for something else. But in any case, the 50% is still secure.
I read three as saying exactly that. Principle three is saying, we're maintaining our fund balance. So I think it's already in there. Am I reading that inaccurately?
Yeah, it's a question for you.
I think you are reading it correctly.
Did you, Fran, did you catch that?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
In terms of using the reserves, my sense is, this is an emergency. We live in earthquake country. A lot of damage can be done. We've seen global warming, where the sea is actually rising, the bay come, invades Emeryville, and I've been told that in 20 years, we can see it come, you know, up Powell Street. I would want to put strict limits in terms of percentages, and if we're 2.3 million over, okay, but once you start shaving off that 50%, put some serious, and I think 10% is too much. I would put very limited and strict threshold on how far you can dig into that.
I was actually going to say something to that point, where I think it's fine for us to spend the 2.3 in a fluctuation situation, but if we're going to drop below, I think number three prevents us from going below the 50%.
I agree.
Would you like to move on to the other policies here?
Yes.
Unfunded liabilities identified and funded, and this would be your PERS, your retiree health, your compensated absences. And you are doing a good job of this already. Capital improvement projects identified and prioritized, your CIP budget fully demonstrates this budget principle.
Can I go back to number four? This may not be on topic exactly, but humor me if you will. The unfunded liability is being identified and funded, so PERS made a decrease in the return rate that they, you know, expect due to the investments they've had, and they haven't been managed very well, unfortunately. And so cities are ponying up more money to ensure that the people who've worked here have the retirement they were promised. My question is, some of us who follow and track this at a state level, my full-time job, actually, knew that this rate reduction was going to come a year ago, and were surprised we didn't get the reduction that was reflected, and were concerned that there is a political masking of this in increments, to not have there be a fire sale on things and people freaking out for economic reasons. Should the city follow what PERS guidance is in terms of the rate reduction, or should we potentially treat the unfunded liability as being what we think it really could be? Does that make, is there any reason to treat that any differently?
You mean, using a lower discount rate?
Yeah, so I, I mean, there are some people who think it's way lower than 6.5, who think it's 5 or lower, actually. And so I just, you know, I'm just concerned that when we choose to make, that everyone here have that same information, that there is a trepidation around that rate, only because when we make these other expenditure choices this year and use our reserves, the little 2.3 we have on top, towards filling a revenue gap, I want us to not find out in three years that we've tabled, because we have done so well on PERS funding in our pattern. I don't want us to find out that we have, it's not 20 or 30 million extra that's been added to our bill, it's 50 million or 60 million that's been added to the bill, and be farther behind. And so I'm just wondering whether we should just, if the best practice is to follow what PERS guidance is, or if we should be more cautious than what is being told to us, in your opinion?
Well, my first comment is that the national experts in this area fully agree with you that 7% is likely too high of a discount rate. The Governor, Governor Brown has been quoted, saying he expects the rate to be dropped further in the future.
Right.
Very political statement. I think CalPERS had, you know, the board has tried to move the needle slowly to allow agencies to adjust their budgets. So here we are, you know, with advance notice that these rates are coming, but they're giving you three years to phase these rate changes in. So this is plenty of notice from CalPERS. Now, remember that slide where I showed you what CalPERS board did December of 2015? In December of 15, 2015, they said, we need to get to 6 and 1/2. We're going to do it over 20 years, so that nobody has to really pay for it, right? But, so for them to drop from 7 and 1/2 to 7 is only going halfway. They've already publicly stated, we believe it's going to be 6 and 1/2. And that's why the slide earlier before showed you that at 6 and 1/2, you have a $50 million liability. We already know that. Will there be additional investment losses? Absolutely. So now back to best practices, which is the second part of your question. Many cities are hiring actuaries to do exactly what you said. Don't believe a thing CalPERS says. Get a second opinion, no different than going to a doctor. Get a second opinion that shows you the range of outcomes, right? There's no, it's not a science, it's an art, right? But I think you are best informed by having a range. If investments are able to achieve this, this is what your cost structure would look like. If investments, unfortunately, might only happen to be this, this would be your cost structure. I think that's the best way to inform a long-term plan, but it takes time and effort for actuaries to produce this information. But I think you would be well-served by, I think you're asking the exact right questions.
Okay, thank you.
There are some additional policies on the next slides I just want to hover over, and this is, and there's a couple of them, I think, are particularly worth discussing. 5% for economic development, is there anyone who wants to comment on this one here? Or on the reserves that have been established to make sure there's delivery on your infrastructure projects? Is there a comment here?
I just have a question about A for Public Works. For transportation purposes, if we had a catastrophic situation, how much does $5 million buy? Does it buy us, like, a road repaired? Does it buy us, I mean, it doesn't buy a bridge, so I'm just trying to figure out what it covers and...
It could be a portion of what you would need. It just depends on what the issue is, yes. It might not be enough.
It might pay the local share on a FEMA claim.
Okay.
That we have a 5% plan to encourage economic development seems excellent. I mean, that's a forward-thinking city. It just seems like we need to do this in order for our city's economic future, so it just seems like we should continue with this. You know, we have a mix of income sources for our city, and, you know, we have to try to compete in an environment where all other cities are envious of what we already have, and they're trying to get it away from us. And we have to study what it takes to swim in the sea of our current economy, so we've got to have some money in there. I don't think that's something we should get rid of.
May I ask staff what we use the $200,000 for each year that comes in that, in that money? The 5% tax increment that goes to economic development, what is it spent on?
Charlie?
We don't have a specific budget for it at the moment, but the, actually, we do have one thing, which the council recently approved, which is the rebate of business license taxes to small businesses. In the future, we would hope to be able to fund a facade improvement program, grant program out of that fund. Also, the council has expressed interest in providing help to small businesses with their development impact fees, and that would come out of that fund. I would note that it's not a huge pot of money, but it's enough to do a few things like that.
So there's a reserve right now, because we haven't been spending 200 a year, right?
Well, I don't know if you'd call it a reserve, but there's about, there's about a million dollars.
Okay, that's what, okay.
Right now.
Thank you.
But we haven't started the rebate program until this year, so we can expect that.
It was only 50,000, so we're...
Oh, yeah, that's not going to make too much of a dent.
Yeah, 43,000.
But I mean, if we start helping businesses... But I mean, if we start helping businesses with facade grants and art gallery tenant improvements is another idea that's been floated, plus development impact fees, that could easily eat up most of that money.
Right, okay.
Susan, can you go to the previous slide, please? So, sorry, yeah, land banking is also in here, too. So that's, that could blow through that quickly.
You can't get too much land.
I don't think a million dollars buys you any land in Emeryville, does it? What does the other 95% go to again?
Yes, and so if you bear with me, I'm going to flip through, go back to the slide so you can see the stacked chart, so forgive me for slipping through all these slides. The original policy was 75% capital, 20 affordable housing, and 5 economic development, and that has changed to add 25% for operations in the current budget cycle.
And we've won awards for that 20% for affordable housing. So that's where we're ahead of other cities in that department.
Does that go to our homeownership programs or to help, does it subsidize the cost of financing a new development, or is it multiple? Or is it, which housing fund is it?
It's kind of all of the above. Yeah, whatever it's needed for.
So Susan, just a quick observation, being that we went from the 75% for capital to 50% for capital with 25%, when you say operations, you mean general fund? Okay. And I guess, one, would that be something of a red flag that we shifted the boomerang funds, is what we call it, 25% into the general fund?
I thought it was a very thoughtful exchange because it was paired with new development impact fees. So the city adopted new revenues to fund its capital program, and it was also paired with the swap of the commercial real estate transfer tax. So yes, 25% was diverted to the general fund, but it was replaced by new development impact fees and by a commitment of the real estate transfer tax.
Which enabled us to make that shift and still feel very confident. Okay.
That's why I asked if that had been equal or reciprocated by those fees. And she didn't have an answer, so I'm curious if we can get that for me, that answer.
Susan.
I do have a concern with this million dollars, even though it may seem a small amount. I've seen money go out and no real tracking of results. What are we getting from it? I've also seen money given to various entities, and those entities using it, and nothing happening for Emeryville residents. So even though it's only $1 million, a million dollars is real money.
I think this is the most important current policy. To ask for you to confirm, and several council members have expressed opinions on different parts of this, would you like to discuss further this particular policy, and is this something you support?
I'd like to talk about it. I want to just say that our city is becoming more like other cities. Our resident population is expanding quickly. Other cities give things back to their residents. Residents cost money. I just can't see that we're going to not have 25% of these residual tax funds, you know, we, our general fund needs it. We're offering more services. We have a denser population. And so I just think that it's inevitable. We can't sustain what we had before because of that in the long run. And the 5%, you know, business encouragement fee, well, we've all talked about that as a positive value for small business, which adds things to our quality of life in our city. It gives local jobs, but local services. I mean, we, I think, were elected on the premise of livability, and that's a component of livability. We are transitioning from the big box regional retail center in the minds of the Bay Area to a more resident-oriented populace that is expecting results. And so that means we need general fund monies going forward. So I don't see any way that we can not have more money coming into our general fund, and this is the source. This is the source that other, the residual tax is, you know, basically it's property tax coming back. Normal cities would use it all, you know, so we, we're doing well to have 50% of it for capital, and that's my opinion.
I would like to poll the rest of council. This may be a little ahead of the next step, but to the point made about economic development, and a million dollars is a significant amount of money. I agree with you, Benet. But I also know that the council is about to do a study session with the planning commission about small business. And when I think of what the challenge is this year, Councilmember Martinez and I are on the Budget and Governance Committee, and we've had a sneak peek at the budget and what's going to come back to all of us in the next few weeks. And we're looking at some erosion of revenues from a couple of the key revenue sources for this city. And so when I think about how to solve for that problem, a lot of times we talk about things in terms of cutting expenses, but we need to think about shoring up revenues. I would be interested in just hearing how other council members feel about making this go from 5 to 10% for economic development so that there is more money on hand to actually support and bolster those very businesses and entities that we have in town that will be the economic generators, so that we can put a parklet in front of a small business that will be able to, you know, produce greater revenue for us and sales taxes, whether we can do things to enhance, whether it's facades, I want to comment on all the different options there are. I really want it to be the organic genesis of what the business community that drives this portion of the economic revenue for the city says. But I would, maybe we revisit this after we have that meeting, but I know we're not going to have it till the end of May, and that's kind of deep into the budget process. But I would just be interested in whether people think we could take another 5% from a different one of these sources and move it, or whether people don't. And I'm open to either, but I just think that sometimes a slightly greater investment from this particular pot of money to the very things that are designed to generate money is maybe a multiplier for us to stem off the revenue shortfalls we have.
Well, we haven't used that pot of money, much it sounds like.
We haven't, because we haven't drafted policies, but the vision with the Small Business Forum would be to create, to hear the community, I think, and then to create policies that would make small business more successful in the city. So I agree with you that we haven't used it, but the vision would be to not just spend through the million dollars, but to have a sustainable source to buoy those parts of the, you know, economic sector here of Emeryville that would help ensure that jobs remain here in Emeryville, ensure that tax revenue, sales tax, and other forces of revenue for us remain here. And so it's just a suggestion I have, but I'd be interested.
I would support that. I am interested, as serving with you on that committee, in breaking our dependency on the cyclical income and exploring ways to diversify our revenue base, and I think this could be a means to do that. So I would be supportive of that.
Well, as I understand it, the 5% I'm good with, partly because I see that as getting started in helping small business. But really, the future of so much of small business is done right when the retail spaces are designed. Usually, these spaces that are not leased out are not developed in our newer developments, and it's because they're not developed that small business can't move into them. So in a way, it's a shortfall on our development requirements for the developers, that we have allowed all of these undeveloped, small spaces without parking to be built in our city. And I don't necessarily want to boost this side of our residual tax money to help out these developments that should have had a better use of infrastructure to start with, you know. So I would say, let's get started with the 5% and see what we can do about this aspect of small business going forward in future development.
How do you feel?
So it's a cart horse for me as well. I feel like, I'm not going to say, let's give more money to economic development until I know how that money's going to be spent. And so if I, if you come back to me, and we're talking $200,000 here, so let's put a real number on it. So if, you know, Mr. Bryant has a really good plan and has talked with, I love the idea of the Small Business Committee meetings, come back with a plan, give me some numbers of what you need. Is that an additional $200,000? Is it something we can do with the current funding level? Is it somewhere in between? Then I can tell you my opinion. Right now, no. I don't want to just throw more money at something unless I know what I'm getting for it.
I concur with Christian, exactly. I think you guys have a little more information than we do, and I'd need that extra information first.
Big boxes going away, I'm sure.
What?
I'm just saying, the brick and mortars retail is not going to be where we're going to be getting all of our funds in the future. And that's not something that I know from our committee, that's something I know from living in Emeryville.
I don't disagree with that at all, but I want to have a plan.
I support what you're saying, Christian. I think it's a prudent, a prudent point to raise, and I'm not, I'm not going to disagree with you. I think, I think the thing that, it sounds like Councilmember Martinez agrees with me on, is that there's a need to have some movement on that, and I appreciate wanting to know where the money will go. I think that we can incentivize people to participate also in this process in determining where the money goes and get better turnout if people felt that there was a meaning, there's a meaningful effort by the city to make this investment. So I see it almost as a, as a, it's the opening of the invitation, like, we're going to increase economic development, and to your point, what could we do with 200,000 versus 400,000 is a fair question. It may not be as simple as what we do with it, but how many of the whats can we do, right? So I know of, and I know you do, too, of places that want to open and have fees that would, that are right now a barrier to opening a business in the community, and we may be able to, instead of helping a handful, help two handfuls of them, which raises our profile as a community that's looking to incentivize and cultivate a small business climate. So I'm not, I'm not here to disagree, because I agree with you that we can always revisit the, how much when we know what the what is. But I would like us then to commit to returning to this after we've made those decisions.
Totally.
Yeah. Are you okay with it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we done with this section?
Was there a consensus to leave as is or to propose a change?
I think we're leaving it as is.
I think it was a consensus to revisit.
Yeah, we'll leave it as it is, though.
Okay. There were, and forgive me, I'm going to jump back through the slides, there were just a couple other policies in place that we would like your affirmation or recommendation on, and this is, number three is the pension. I'm going to move forward to the current funding status. So you're projected at June 2018 to have a reserve of $12 million, which covers 25% of the 2015 net pension liability at the 6.5% level. You're well ahead of others, but still 75% behind. The current plan, the current budget uses this reserve to subsidize your current contributions to CalPERS. Specifically, in the 17, 18 budget, you're drawing $1 million of that reserve. The original proposal was to take this money and to put it into a trust fund, an IRS-qualified trust fund that would allow you to invest this for the long term, and then to judiciously use that money to subsidize CalPERS as necessary. With the CalPERS, and I think you've actually sent out an RFP to consider investment agents for that, for those funds. With the change in the CalPERS pension, this cash flow may be needed sooner rather than later. So I think there's still some variables, and as the vice mayor recommended, there is certainly opportunity for this discount rate to go further in the future. Is there any feedback that you have on this pension reserve, or how it's funded, or what you would like to do with it in the future?
I would like us to study, I would like us to get the second opinion we talked about personally, just because we are, we are very fortunate that we are ahead of other cities, and you're right about that. At the same time, what is forecast for us in terms of the rate versus what is the reality when it comes time to pay are not always the same thing. And how you plan, you know, the state works, you know, works its end of it to make that predictable for us, but the reality is that the rate may not be what we think it is, and we may have a larger liability than what we planned for. And so I would, this is an area that has been managed well in the past, but I would like us to, and I appreciate your, one of my questions was about whether the trust is the right way to do it at this time, but it sounds like maybe not. And I would just like us to look very carefully at ways to, the same way we fund capital improvement, by having a dedicated source that may fluctuate during years, but we take the piece from cap, from, you know, tax increment, we take the commercial transfer taxes. I think it would be nice to identify a goal, at least, for how to take some portion of funds like that to commit to this liability, so that every year that we are making an out in the out column, we have an anticipated in in the in column to keep meeting that minimum. That's the best way to prevent long-term offset. Would you agree with me?
Absolutely. It's the best way to ensure that you have the funding to sustain your services.
Okay.
Over the long term.
So I would like us to explore that and maybe have somebody give us a second opinion on what PERS is worth, but that's me.
And you said that we're currently, the current plan is to pay less in because we've got more of a reserve for the CalPERS?
So you have set aside cash, it still sits in your treasury, but you have a dedicated PERS reserve fund that holds this 13 million of cash, of which you would plan to, the budget draws down a million of that to subsidize the rate to CalPERS. So the general fund has budgeted less than CalPERS has asked because you have money that you will be drawing down to make the payment to CalPERS hold.
Okay.
Okay, here's what it looks like to me in relation to this, that we're going to be slowly reducing our services a little bit. It's just inevitable. I don't see there's any other choice, but we're going to be slicing and dicing a little bit off of all of our services going forward, just because of this reality. I don't see the...
Well, you can increase revenue, that's the other, everyone thinks of it expenditures. You've got to think of, how do we get new revenue? Cannabis is a new revenue source. I know that the Councilmember Martinez has proposed a soda tax, that's a new revenue source, that has yet to be determined how they'd be allocated, of course, but those are the types of opportunities the city needs to explore. We've done a good job. So my goal would be not to reduce services, my goal would be to frame it in, we need new revenues to sustain the quality of living we've established in the city. But I appreciate your comment because I think that in the absence of that, that is what happens. So I think that's the other side of the coin, yes.
I have to agree with the vice mayor. In just a little research that I've done just now, our utility users' tax is 5.5%, yet in Oakland it's 7.5%, in Berkeley at 7.5%, Piedmont at 7.5%, Albany at 6.5% to 7%, Alameda at 7.5%, San Francisco at 7.5%. Similarly, our transient occupancy taxes slightly lower than in other cities. So there are different things that we can explore. I don't agree that it's a zero-sum game when you consider that revenues can be expanded by thinking creatively with economic development.
Well put.
I think you missed the other oncoming taxes now on Airbnb, or short-term rentals, I guess is the politically correct way to say that.
Well, it is just an extension of the transient occupancy.
But I'm saying it's a nice increase for us in that.
How much does that yield for us? Do we, do we have an estimation for that?
We don't expect a whole lot of those.
Okay.
Maybe, you know, 10 or 12. And it's only one room, it's not the same as a big hotel.
Yeah, well, okay. That's okay. It's still income, and I don't think we can put enough money aside for this. This is a sort of Damocles hanging over every city, and when we talk about being competitive with our neighbors, the fact that we're ahead of the curve on this, as the economic, the winds of the economy change over the next few years, this is what's going to crush other cities, and the fact that we're even, even being 10 feet ahead of them, you know, the further ahead we can stay, cities like Oakland will be crippled just because their impact is going to be so much larger than ours. And so I just can't emphasize, I, you know, to second what Members Bowers and Medina said, I think any new income needs to go to this, just so we can maintain our current levels of service and be very forward-thinking on it.
I'd just also like to say that in general, our city was unbelievably... I just also like to say that in general, our, our city was unbelievably low taxation rate for almost every category. And in the last two years now, we are just low. We're not unbelievably low, we're just low for how we do taxes. And there's an advantage to being slightly lower than all the surrounding cities. We might end up with more actual net income, there's a ratio there, you know, we, we can attract business too by being slightly less. So that's, you know, just a, a point of view to, to look at. It isn't just that we can't get more revenue, we can, but there's a trade-off, is, is my point.
It goes back to Member Bowder's suggestion that we keep looking at economic development. You know, I think that's one of the things of, we can be more selective by not just having the tax rate be affordable, but, you know, the, the refunds, and thank you, Mr. Bryant, for that, and, and the facade increases. There's a lot of things we can do to incentivize Emeryville, and, you know, you're absolutely right, the more businesses we have, the better, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just have a, one more question for, for Susan while we're talking about the pension reserve. For an actuarial analysis, how, how much are we talking about in costs, and how much are we talking about in time? Ballpark figure.
There are some significant new accounting standards that are coming down the pike. If you remember your CAFRA presentation, the, the reason I'm saying this is the actuaries, there aren't enough actuaries in the country to do all the actuaries that are needed to implement the upcoming retiree health. We just implemented the new accounting standards for pensions, we're about to implement the new accounting standards for retiree health, so actuaries are in short supply right now. But I, but this is important, and I, I'm, I can't quote a number, maybe, probably less than 10,000, maybe 5,000, I don't know.
But it's actually getting the actuary is the problem.
I think you can find someone, because I think this is a very important topic.
Can I ask the question in a different way? I feel like we won't be the only city trying to figure out this amount. Is there a reason that we have to do the actuary tables ourselves, or?
Or crib?
Yeah, can we just cheat off of another well-run city?
Actually, I met with an actuary not long ago, just a few weeks ago regarding this, and the cost, she, we haven't provided her all the data about our city, so she mentioned about $15,000. So if we ask her to do more analysis, it might be higher. So, you know, I would say at least $15,000.
And the actuarial analysis would be able to yield what for the council's benefit?
Right. So the actuary will use different discount rates to calculate the liabilities based on what you said earlier. Yeah.
So we could, we could see the range essentially in the end of what we might be looking at as a price tag long-term?
Right.
And to answer Mr. Pat's question, or restate his question, meaning that our city has a unique ratio of liabilities, therefore can't just be generically looked at by someone else, is that, is that correct?
Well, actually, we can tell the actuary the parameters, and they can, you know, play with those parameters and set different rates and say, hey, if the rate is set at 5%, how much is your liability in the next, you know, 20 or 30 years? If it's 6%, how much are you looking at? Does that answer your question?
Not really.
Oh.
So I guess, I...
We're going to, we're going to tag-team here. The answer is that the rate is individual to the city, depending on the ratio of your retirees to your actives. Those older cities that have a lot of retirees, you need to have had a lot of assets that aside to pay for their retirement. In theory, those should be fully funded, right? So to the extent that those assets aren't earning the same investment rate, you have to backfill those. So younger cities that have more actives that are retirees have less of an impact. The more retirees, the higher your ratio is between your retirees and active, the more you are impacted by this particular situation.
So we just need to hire more people?
There you go.
So, two things. One, how do people feel about having a second opinion? Do people feel like we're okay at this time?
I think it's a small price to pay for a second opinion.
Yeah, if it's that Emeryville-specific...
It's a small amount.
I think it also, yeah, I mean, my goal with this, and I appreciate your answers, both Susan and Susan, just giving us the range and the forecast for what this will cost, I think leads to better long-term planning on finances, and to the points about, you know, you can pivot only so much in a quarter or two, but you can't, you know, by the time something becomes a systemic problem, it's often you're behind the game. And so having a little more information is always helpful, and I agree with Councilmember Martinez, it's a, not an exorbitant cost to get that information, so if everyone agrees, maybe staff could get that information for us. And then I just had one other item, which was with bonds. So I wanted to just let my colleagues know that I, I would like to explore the issue of an infrastructure bond for some specific limited purposes here in the city of Emeryville for consideration by you as potentially being a ballot initiative in the future. And the interplay of this with these things tonight is that by, we have policies in place related to capital improvements, and we are trying to fund certain capital improvements by putting money aside towards those things. And there's a certain amount, we're in a very good fiscal situation to take on some debt, as long as it's within a certain range of reason. And I think that identifying what that range is and identifying ways to accelerate the funding of those, those final programs allows us to free up money that's otherwise slowly at a year-by-year basis earmarked for long-term capital improvements, and make that money potentially in the future dedicated to funding unfunded liabilities. So we could, we could potentially finance certain projects quicker today that are sitting on a long-term notepad for us, and move that designation in the future to helping in some percentage finance pension liabilities so that we do stay ahead of this. And I think knowing both the range and knowing what is an acceptable amount of bond authority that the, the voter can accept as a means for completing certain parts of capital improvement in the city is a worthwhile, a worthwhile adventure, I'll call it. So I don't know if, if others have just preliminary thoughts on exploring this, not asking for anyone to do anything today, of course, but whether people have just thoughts on that, because I have been looking into that.
I think it's a really interesting proposal, and something that might be a clever way of, oh, I think that's very interesting and perhaps a clever way of looking at how to address these long-term unfunded liabilities. I also do think we still have one particular tax that is unbelievably low in the city of Emeryville, and it is, affects a significant portion of our larger businesses here, and if we're going to really have to seriously look at, depending on what the actuarial estimate is of how to fund these long-term liabilities, that is potentially a very large source of revenue that maybe our ratio is...
Are you going to say what this tax is?
The business tax, we're really way, way lower than everywhere else on it.
Well, you just let the dynamite somewhere.
I know, I'm going to say it, it is what it is, it's really low.
Well, there, there are some, there are some, maybe the Budget Committee, we could study this, because there are some challenges with that, we know. But it's a good point.
I think that Mr. Bowder's idea of studying bonds, especially in relation to some land banking ideas we have, it just could be a smart thing to do right now, because our city is not expanding in its real estate, even though we have had some neighborhoods in Oakland wanting to join us. I don't think that's viable. I think what we can do is look at some of the land that we might acquire and maybe sell too, you know, that we, we can look at that, and studying how to do that with a bonding, I think is something we would need to know about. So I think it's a worthwhile investment for us to look at that.
As you consider the options, the feasibility of a bond issue, there's really two teams of people that you're looking at. One is to serve a current, the community interest.
Right.
And what level of tax or form of tax they might find most acceptable for ballot. There are teams of people who just focus on ballot measures. Separately, there's the financing team that would put together and structure a bond issue for you that fit within the parameters identified by your community outreach team.
Thank you for outlining that.
I don't know if Councilmember Pat or Martinez wants to chime in on this item.
Yeah, it's hard to follow that, Ms. Medina, but I, I am going to say that I'm not a big proponent of bonds, because I feel like it's taking on debt, and I am sort of pay-as-you-go kind of person. That said, this is the big issue, and we'd have to structure it so, and I also, I also don't have the brightest forecast for our economic future over the next few years, and I feel like right now speeding up capital improvement projects is going to cost us more money in the short term. I feel like construction is going to slow down, I could be wrong in this, and things could get cheaper going forward. So I just, I have that in my mind, but I do think it's worth exploring, and I'd like to see it structured so that we are very much so banking for the services. I wouldn't want to just bond and increase our spending. I think it's much more important that we look and be very strategic. So I like that you framed it that way.
So I, I am interested in knowing what our bonding capacity is. I think, I think we are due for a downturn, so construction could get cheaper, and it would be good to be the city that was doing construction, paying prevailing wages, having some equity in construction while this is happening. So I think it's, it's very, you know, not ready to pull the trigger yet, I want to explore, I want to know what these projects are, and certainly they're going to fall in the realm of what the voters and the residents of Emeryville have already asked us for, if they're in our general plan and on our CIP. So we can be very strategic, I think it would be an exciting thing to do, I think it's, it would be an exciting way to pay down our unfunded liabilities.
Yeah.
I've never said that sentence before. Nobody has.
Well, I just want, oh, you're not doing, go ahead.
Nope, that's it.
I just want to, I want to thank both of you for those comments, because I think it illuminates where I'm, I'm at, which is that the cost of land in a city that's just 1.2 square land miles at this time is, is high, but having the authority to bond when the, when the price of land goes down, and acquire land at a discount rate, which will at the same time then be available to be pushed out to development purposes that meet what the city's current needs are, what residents want, what we know are our ongoing long-term infrastructure needs, that we can't take those steps when we finally hit the bottom of the, the real estate market again. We need to be in a position to be, have the capacity to be funded to a degree, and I think identifying what those projects are for, with the community's, you know, input is important, but I do, I, land banking is a very important principle for a city of our size, and to Councilmember Martinez's points, I think it's a cost-effective, long-term strategy. So, thank you, and I will continue to work with staff, and we'll bring something back for your all discussion later.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. Can I clarify that the 1.1 million for fiscal 1718 on this chart, that this council is comfortable with staff spending that down by the 1.1 million dollars and putting that into the city's general fund? Because I, I've kind of heard different things, there was a concern expressed about spending it down and, and rather wanting to preserve it, so I'm not sure.
And the existing budget already assumes the 1.1 million, so if there was a recommendation not to draw it down, then we would have a million-dollar imbalance in the budget.
So, just to clarify, that, to me, when I read that, I read that as to cover the change in the discount rate? Am I reading that incorrectly?
It is, it was adopted before the change in the discount rate was adopted.
So this is just to pay the straight liability, oh, okay.
It was because we did have the additional one-time money come our way, and so we, we put the money aside, the 13 and 1/2 million last year, and the idea was, although with all the discussion tonight, it certainly looks very attractive to be able to hang on to all of that, but I think the concern that we have is if we don't apply 1.1 million of that, then our challenges will be greater for this upcoming year, so...
So I think my answer is I would not have budgeted that way, I would have left it in the, I'll use a dated term, the lockbox. But I think since it's already budgeted, I'm comfortable with it.
Do you, do you prefer then, as we prepare the budget, the next two-year budget, that we not rely on doing this in the future years? Or shall we continue to bring the additional money into the budget to augment the budget? So we either spend it down over the years, or we, after the, or after this next year, or we preserve the reserve?
I think I'm going to trust the Budget Committee and staff to come up with some various options for us to consider, and see what that actually looks like. So I can't speak to it. I don't know about the rest of council, but for me, I think this was something that was budgeted already, so I want to leave it. I think you're, I think we're all in agreement that we want to keep banking for this, but we, I can't speak to what next, the next two-year budget looks like.
Well, if I'm understanding you correctly, this was one-time money we put aside to address our pension, for our pension reserve. Okay, we have a shortfall, we need 1.1 million, one time. I don't see it as a yearly drawdown.
Okay, that, that gives me what I was looking for as far as a goal for subsequent years.
Yeah, we want to keep our pension reserve funds, we don't want to spend them. I mean, we're, we need to draw it down for this year, that we got this one-time money, but let's treat it as one-time money, use it one time, and then look at our budget and see if we can, for the next year, whether we can not do this again. Out of my fellow councilmembers.
I'm, I'm not opposed to that, I just, we would have to make sure then we budget for where that will come from. That's the question mark.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm on that same place of, I just don't know, there's too many variables right now to know if it's, ideally, I'd love to keep it banked, but there's just way too many variables, I'd have to see what they look like.
Yeah, I mean, keeping it banked would then imply we should just do the trust. At some, I mean, at some point, it's worth more to do it in a trust. So I think if we're going to move that way, and we're going to say we're going to look to operationalize annual revenues towards paying this pension reserve, then we should also then reexamine putting some portion of that 12 million into a trust that yields more money on return for us annually than where it sits now, I'm assuming, is that right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Here, there are two, if there is no other discussion on the pension, there were two other reserves, one of which you have extensively discussed, but let's just touch on those slides in case you have any feedback on them, and I'm going to, excuse me, I've already gone by it, just a minute, please. There was a small amount of one-time money set aside for community programs and for the art center, but this was really one-time money, and I think there are, these have already been appropriated. So I'm just going to simply move to the next slide, which was the 50% rainy day fund, economic uncertainty, and a number of you have expressed interest in this threshold. Is there any other discussion on this 50% threshold?
I think the only discussion was to go to 55% to cover Mayor Donahue's stability fund, right?
What?
No, it's 45 plus 5.
45 and 5.
Yeah, I'm not willing to go below 50, so.
I just had this horrible vision, we have a big earthquake, and we have money in Emeryville set aside, we're providing for people and services, and people in Berkeley and Oakland pour into Emeryville, and all that saving was for naught.
We banned Subarus, problem solved. No one from Berkeley will...
Oh, my gosh. You know, in other words, you can't, we, we put away too much money.
Breaking stocks.
We could be, you know, it could be like a problem.
FEMA will, FEMA will, will fund a lot of, a lot of anything that's disastrous.
Okay, that's good, yeah, so 50% seems like the number.
This is, this is designed, this is designed in the event that everybody shops online next year, and nobody goes to, to Diane's comments earlier, everyone shops online and no one goes to a store, and now we have 24% of the revenue, which is dedicated, or comes from sales tax, I should say, isn't there, and we need to meet general fund expenditures to fund the salaries of all the people who work here, and all our ongoing program and services costs. I mean, that's what that's designed to do, so, not to save us when we all go underwater, Scott.
Or build a wall to keep people from Berkeley and Oakland out. I'm not sure where he was going with that one.
Whatever the opposite of patchouli is, let's just plant that.
All right, I really hope you're not proposing a wall, that would be...
No, 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 I'm not.
I want to apologize to all the people in Berkeley, we respect you and love you, and one council member doesn't speak for the rest of us.
But what, you know, 50% seems good. I don't think we should raise it.
Nobody proposed it.
Nobody thinks we should raise it, that was a joke.
Member Pat's was suggesting I was saying that.
Okay. I was taking what you said, having some liberties with it.
I do want to ask a question, though, we do have a separate, do we have a separate fund for earthquake, we have an earthquake preparedness fund, I believe, a couple million dollars, is that right?
It's a small amount, I'm thinking it's a million, something in that range.
Okay.
It's about 1.3 million. Last year, the city council recommended that we put more money into that fund when funds are available.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you to the council members. You've provided a lot of valuable feedback. This has been very helpful. Is there anything else that we can answer for you tonight?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we are on to action item 6.2, consideration of submission of application to the Bureau of Medical Cannabis Regulation to serve on the Cannabis Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So there's a short staff report, and as it indicates there, our applications are now open to serve on the State Cannabis Advisory Committee. The deadline for submittal is this Friday, March 17. We've put this on in case the council would like to discuss the item, if you would like to appoint one or more of your members to apply for it. If there is a desire to appoint a member or members, then we can take that direction and provide it to Townsend in time for the application deadline by Friday.
They don't have a schedule for this?
I don't know what the schedule is. This was-
I don't think there is a schedule that exists yet. It's probably going to be once a month in Sacramento. So I'm interested in applying, however, not knowing the schedule. It's hard to know if I'd be available on that specific day and time if they haven't said it yet.
So I have a question to that point. Is there any, sometimes these types of applications, they expect you to confirm your availability. Would there be any black mark against somebody who put in before the schedule was set, saying, "I'm interested," and they pick Councilmember Martinez, and then she's not available because of the time or the regularity of the meeting?
Perhaps what we could do, to answer the question directly, I don't know. But perhaps what the council can do to avoid that issue is to designate a primary and a backup.
Would you like to be the primary?
Well, you know what? I actually wanted to open it up to you folks in case there was someone who felt they could make it unpredictably, and if they were interested before.
You know, I just feel like you've been ahead of this issue for the rest of us. I would feel most comfortable with you representing us.
I am very interested in being the primary.
I'm happy to be the alternate.
Okay. And I would definitely include on my application, depending on availability, so they were at least aware that there was a chance I wouldn't be able to make it.
And more importantly, I'm willing to trade committee assignments to make you available because I'm trying to think of what conflicts you have. I don't know your personal conflicts, but on your council conflicts.
I have a five-year-old conflict and a three-year-old conflict. They're the main ones. Anything else I can work around.
I nominate Diane Martinez, and I nominate, as the primary, and I nominate Ally Medina as the alternate.
I second that.
Do you have any objections to that nomination?
No objections.
Okay.
All right.
Shall I take a vote?
Please.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Patz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowder?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So I will coordinate with Nicolo, and then you'll be hearing, both of us, you'll be hearing from either him or from myself. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Should I fill out the application myself, or should I wait to hear from you guys?
You know, let me coordinate with you offline. Thank you.
So before we close the meeting, I had a quick announcement. As the representative up here that is the poster child for triathlons, I want to continue my challenging. On Saturday, I challenged the fire department, and they graciously accepted. And so I'm extending it now to the police department. And so, you know, first, I want to thank firefighter Blair for stepping up. I think he's going to run it entirely himself.
Yes.
But police, you are not beholden to that. EPD can send a contingent of three people, can send one person. So I'd love you to ask your officers and see if they're interested.
Challenge accepted, and we will have at least one person, if not more.
100% do it, too.
Oh, are you in as well?
So, so, okay. So, Member Patz, I have a question. So have we decided, like, are we going to have two people who run the whole thing ourselves, and then a relay? How are we doing this, so we all know what we're doing?
I'm down to do the whole thing. I planned beforehand of doing the whole thing.
If you and I, you and I want to do the whole thing, because I think there's going to be two school board members who do the whole thing, and then three of them will run it. So what do you guys want to do?
Diane, did you want to run? Because I know you don't want to swim.
I don't want to, I don't want to run or swim, but I don't want to take cycling away from our fastest cyclist.
Well, I'll do swimming and cycling, but I can't run. I could hobble, but no running.
You would, what would you do?
Oh, well, I'll do the running, then. If you want to take the bicycle and you want to take the swim, I'll do the run.
I'll take the bike, yeah. Thank you.
I wanted to swim, but I-
Are we actually competing for time? Because I was going to use my beach cruiser.
No, no, no. This is, this is just, we try to beat the school district. We don't care about the time.
Oh, I'm fine with that. Yeah.
Now the police department and the fire department.
And the fire. I'm sorry, I'm making this, you know, I'm-
Or competition.
You know, in a budget committee, if you stay in here too long, I'm going to throw the challenge out to you guys. So it's good to sneak out now.
Danae's got her helmet on.
I'm someone of the cycling.
That Bill Reuters can swim. That man is fast.
I hate to be the fun police on this.
Uh-oh.
But not on the agenda.
Oh.
So I appreciate the announcement, and thank you. And that's appropriate, but I would ask that we stop our discussion.
Fun policing, accepted.
Thank you.
So, are we done? Okay, any other announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to do my request about the adjournment.
Oh, yes.
If there are no other announcements. So, I just want to take a moment of silence to adjourn this meeting in the memory of the 18-year-old Sultan Bay who was lost to gun violence. An Emeryville resident who passed away the other night was shot in his car and lost his life. So if we could take a moment, please.
Thank you. And I just also want to recognize that this was an 18-year-old boy. And a lot of the times when you read about these things in the news, young black men are characterized as men, and this was someone's child, an Emeryville resident's child, actually someone who's applied for our planning commission. And she lost him, and there was a lot of possibility that was lost that night. So thank you for taking a moment to think of this person.
Thank you for bringing it to us. I appreciate that greatly.
Well, with that, this meeting's adjourned.